I will call to order the Monday, June 22nd meeting of the Verona Common Council, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we will have the roll call. Ms. Schofield, if you would, please.
Alderperson Diaz.
Here.
Alderperson Linder.
Here.
Alderperson McIlvery.
Here.
Alderperson Ricky.
Here.
Alderperson Steiner.
Here.
Alderperson Touche.
Present.
And Alderperson yours.
Here.
Alderperson Doyle is absent and excused tonight.
We do have a quorum, and we will proceed with the agenda. Next on the agenda is public comment. Do we have anyone from the public that wishes to speak this evening? Not seeing any member of the public in the audience this evening. Mr. Steiner?
Thank you, Mayor. Brad Steiner, I'm representing a group of people in District Three. We have been working on a concern that is taking place within our city that happens every year about this time, about six weeks ago. People start taking their recreation vehicles out of storage from the winter. They bring them home, and they put them in their driveways or on the street to wash them up and spruce them up and prepare for their yearly vacation. Several of the people who are their neighbors refer to these people as their lawn ornaments. They're very unhappy. They do not like looking at them, and they have been giving me many of their concerns at my neighborhood meetings. We have approached the city, the inspectors, the administrator, and we're not seeing improvement. These people are still doing this. Some of them are on the edge of the ordinance. They will go out and drive their vehicle or tow their boat or their ATV or whatever it is. They'll tow it out for half a day and bring it back and park it again till whenever the vacation time comes along. Most of these people know the ordinance exists, but they do not want to pay the fees for the storage where they have them stored over the winter. A huge concern. And they're not happy with the replies they're getting from the city, and so as an alderman, my approach, I think, will be to encourage these citizens to start writing to the editorial for the Verona Press, to get their feelings out so the whole city sees it and it's made public that way. They're not happy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steiner. Any other public comments this evening? Not seeing anyone from the public here, so we will move along then to Agenda Item Number Five, which is the approval of the minutes from the June 8th meeting of the council. Those minutes were included with your packet. What is your pleasure?
Move approval.
We have a motion by Mr. Yours. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Ricky. Were there any additions or corrections to the minutes of the previous meeting? Not seeing any. All those in favor of approval of minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That motion carries, and the minutes are approved. Under Mayor's business this evening, the only thing I did want to mention, I know Mr. Burns has a number of things on his report, is that if you drive around the city, there's quite a bit of construction that's going on as far as our streets, so we would ask people to just be careful as you're driving through those areas where construction is occurring, and with good weather, hopefully, all that will be done fairly soon. So, we would appreciate your patience with that. So, with that, I will move to the Administrator's report. Mr. Burns, please.
Yes, thank you. I have a few updates this evening. Dane County Emergency Management is working on an update to the countywide natural hazard mitigation planning process. I attended a kickoff meeting for that project on June 9th. City of Verona will be participating in the update of that plan with information for Verona. We'll be working with Dane County Emergency Management over the next several months as they go through and update that plan. The focus is looking at identifying what the greatest risks are for natural hazards, what our critical assets and facilities are, and what, if any, strategies can be used to mitigate those risks. There'll be additional information coming out in the coming months on that, as well as public education as part of that process. The Police Department has extended offers to two additional police officers. Those officers will be starting on July 20th, and with those offers and those officers starting, the Police Department will be at full staffing with their complement with the chief, two lieutenant positions, three sergeants, and then the detectives and patrol officers. For the Fire Department and the Fire Station Project, we have a project meeting scheduled tomorrow, but contingent on everything going well with that progress update meeting, Fire is tentatively planning to move the fire trucks over to the apparatus bays in the new station on the 6th of July and to begin operating out of the new station on that date, as well as starting to staff the station 24 hours a day out of the new station on that date with a crew of one full-time position, which would be an officer position, and then a paid-on-premises person as well. The project will not be complete on that date, but we hope to be far enough along to be able to move the trucks over, which would allow the current apparatus bay to be demolished, which is needed before the final site work and paving can be done for the rear parking areas. We're anticipating that EMS hopefully would be able to move in for the Fit Verona EMS component, hopefully around the beginning of August, and then looking at total completion of all of the site work on the project, wrapping up probably in August, shooting for September 1st completion. A couple of dates coming up. With July 4th falling on a weekend this year, July 3rd will be recognized as the city holiday, and City Hall will be closed on July 3rd, which is a Friday. The following week, on July 9th, is the scheduled date for the border review meeting, and the June CDA meeting, or Community Development Authority meeting, was canceled, both due to the weather that had been planned as an outdoor meeting, as well as some availability conflicts. We are looking to reschedule that and combine that with the July meeting. Tentative date has been proposed of July 23rd, which is a Thursday. We need to confirm that date with members of the CDA, and I'll send out information on that once we have a date confirmed. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
There any questions for Mr. Burns on his report? Mr. Linder, please.
Once the fire station, everything's in there, is there going to be an open house for the public in, maybe in the fall, or tentative plan?
Yes, there will be an open house. We have not set a date yet. We want to wait until we get a little bit further along and know exactly when we're going to be complete, but we have talked about doing a walkthrough for members of the council, as well as the ad hoc committee that had worked on the planning process for the fire station, and then doing a public open house as well. So, more information will come as we get the date narrowed down.
In the fall?
Yeah, in the fall, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Burns? I'm not seeing any, so we will go to the Engineers' report. Mr. Gunlock, please.
Thank you. Update on a large amount of street construction in the city. First is the East Verona Avenue-Lincoln Street reconstruction. East Verona Avenue has been paved and the pavement markings installed. Currently, we're waiting for traffic signal equipment to arrive, which the vendors tell us is scheduled for the first week of July. Traffic signals will be installed after that. The mainline sanitary sewer and storm sewer on Lincoln Street has been completed. Sanitary sewer services still need to be replaced. Sewer service connections and water main will be installed this week or started this week. Once the utilities are completed, the street grading will commence, and work on this project is scheduled for completion at the end of August. 2015 street rehabilitation project, pavement pulverizing and street grading on Tamarack Way, Basswood Avenue, and Tamarack Court will commence this week. Asphalt paving will follow either later this week or early next week. Curb has been replaced on North Nine Mound Road and the south half of South Nine Mound Road. North half of Nine Mound Road is ready for the curb to be poured, which should happen this week. Median curb on Paoli Street has also been completed. Curb removals have been completed on Valleyview Street, with removals on Valleyview Court being done this week. This project should also be completed by the end of August. And finally, Cathedral Point Phase Five. Grading has commenced on this phase of the subdivision. Utility work is scheduled to start July 6th, and all work is to be completed by October 1st. So, that completes my report for this evening. If there's questions, I would try to answer them.
Are there any questions this evening for Mr. Gunlock? Don't see any. Thank you, Bob.
Welcome.
We will move then to Committee reports, and we'll begin with the Finance Committee. Mr. McIlvery, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under Item 9A1, I will make a motion to approve payment of the monthly bills in the amount of $1,475,205.91.
We have a motion by Mr. McIlvery. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Linder. Mr. McIlvery?
Mr. Mayor, according to Mr. Burns, about $914,000 of this month's bills are for the Fire and EMS station. Three of the larger items, however, from this month's bills, first being to AECom Technical Services, $94,266.41. The majority of that, about $68,000 of it, is for the Nine Mound Reconstruction Project, which is supported by TIP-7. Second largest item is to the Hammersley Stone Company for the street rehab on Lincoln Street reconstruction. That is $210,671.42. And the third and final that I will mention tonight, to TMB Supply Company LLC for material purchase on the Fire and EMS station, $319,905.38. And to this point, I believe Mr. Burns said we are about 83, at 83 percent of our construction cost for the fire station. I would be available to answer questions if anybody has any.
Thank you, Mr. McIlvery. Are there any questions for the Finance Committee or for staff? Not seeing any. The motion before you is to approve the payment of bills in the amount totaling $1,475,205.91. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, and that motion carries. Mr. McIlvery?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under Item 9A2, I will make a motion to accept the 2014 audited city and utility financial statements prepared by Baker Tilly Virtual Kraus, LLP.
We have a motion by Mr. McIlvery. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Linder. Mr. McIlvery?
Thank you. Today, the city's auditors from Baker Tilly presented the audited financial statements to the Finance Committee. The statements include a clean opinion, which indicates that they fairly represent the city's financial position in all material respects. Baker Tilly prepares the city's general and utility financial statements and provides a communication to management, which includes comments on the city's internal control procedures and information on accounting standard changes. The City Council action would be to formally accept the 2014 audited financial statements, and I would mention that this will be the first time, I think, that there have been no comments relating to internal controls. They were very appreciative of the efforts the council made at increasing staff to help our staff, existing staff, get the job done, and I would mention, too, that they had very good things to say about our staff and their ability to make this audit come off as smoothly as it did. So, thank you to staff, all the staff that was involved.
Thank you, Mr. McIlvery. Are there questions or comments from the council? I would just echo the comments that Mr. McIlvery said. We've always had good feedback from our auditors, but this year, there were no, none of those management things that were mentioned with internal controls, and again, because of the staff that we added last year. So, seeing no questions, all those in favor of accepting the financial audits signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Mr. McIlvery?
Just a comment before I move on to the next two items. We do have Dawn Gunderson Sheel from Ellers Associates here. She can answer questions as we move into this, and she would probably do a much better job of explaining the majority or the body of what went into this. I would also like to say that because of favorable market conditions, we are looking at bonds and the sale of promissory notes with an expense to levy less of $131,940. So, that's great. With that in mind, you should have all received a resolution for Item Number 9A3, which I will make a motion to approve, Resolution R-15028, authorizing the issuance and sale of $4,865,000 of general obligation promissory note Series 2015-A.
We have a motion by Mr. McIlvery. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Linder. Mr. McIlvery?
I believe at this time, if there are any questions, it would be best either direct them to Bill or our council here.
Or to Dawn, sure. Are there any questions or comments? I know the Finance Committee, heard this prior to the council meeting tonight, there were a number of members of the council there, but we want to make sure if anyone has any questions that they have the opportunity to do so. The good news, as Mr. McIlvery indicated, is that the actual amount that we're borrowing is reduced from what we had talked about last month. The rates came in good, and it was beneficial to the city. But are there questions of the council? Or Mr. Burns? Dawn, anything that you might want to add? Anything? If there's no questions, it's pretty straightforward. Seeing no questions, wait, we do have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Linder. I'll ask one more time. Any questions or comments? Not seeing any. All those in favor of, this is Agenda Item 9A3. Mayor? I'm sorry.
(inaudible)
A roll call, yes. Yep, that's right. This is Resolution R-15028, and it does require a roll call vote. Ms. Schofield, if you would, please.
Alderperson Steiner.
Aye.
Alderperson Touche.
Aye.
Alderperson yours.
Aye.
Alderperson Diaz.
Aye.
Alderperson Linder.
Aye.
Alderperson McIlvery.
Aye.
And Alderperson Ricky.
Aye.
And that motion, the roll call vote passes unanimously. Mr. McIlvery?
Thank you. Again, you will see a reduction in the amount that went out for sale on our general obligation corporate purpose bonds. You should see an amended resolution prepared by our bond council. So, under Item 9A4, I will make a motion to approve Resolution R-15029, awarding the sale of $4,765,000 in general obligation corporate purpose bond Series 2015-B.
We have a motion by Mr. McIlvery. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Linder. Mr. McIlvery, anything to add?
I don't have anything to add. Again, if anyone has any specific questions, we've got better people probably to answer than me.
Questions or comments from any of the Alders? No questions or comments? We would ask for a roll call of vote again on this. Ms. Schofield, if you'd read the roll, please.
Alderperson Touche.
Aye.
Alderperson yours.
Aye.
Alderperson Diaz.
Aye.
Alderperson Linder.
Aye.
Alderperson McIlvery.
Aye.
Alderperson Ricky.
Aye.
And Alderperson Steiner.
Aye.
And that roll call vote also passes unanimously. Mr. McIlvery, anything else from the Finance Committee?
No. I guess the only thing I would mention is that one of the things that came out during the auditing process and during this sale was that the city's in very good shape financially. This council and previous councils have done a very good job at being conservative in their approach, and because of that, they've maintained our ratings with Moody, which allows us to get better rates. I would also like to mention that we've had lots of conversations over the years about our outstanding debt, and for the benefit of those out in the public, I would like to say that while the outstanding amount is significant, the city has managed to maintain a very steady rate as it relates to our valuation. So, that's good for the city and its overall goals, and moving forward, there is opportunity, I think, for us to do some things that would allow us to get an even better bond rate, which allows us to borrow at a better rate, too. So, that would be all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
I would thank you, Dawn, for sticking around.
Thank you for those comments, and thank you, Dawn. We appreciate the good work you do. We will move then to the Public Works Sewer and Water Committee. Mr. Touche, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under Item 9B1, I would like to make a motion to award the contract for the 2015, I want to kill this one, Bittimus Seal Coat Project.
We have a motion by Mr. Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McIlvery. Mr. Touche?
Two sealed bids were received for this project. The lowest base bid was submitted by Farner Asphalt Sealers LLC of Wanakee, Wisconsin, in the amount of $293,822.80. The second lowest bid was submitted by Scott Construction Incorporated of Lake Dalton, Wisconsin, in the amount of $298,915.58. Based on past work performance in the city of Verona and references checked, staff is of the opinion that Farner Asphalt Sealers LLC has the personnel, equipment, and financial assets necessary to complete the 2015 Bittimus Seal Coat Project in a satisfactory manner and is qualified to perform the work. I would therefore recommend that the city of Verona accept the bid for Farner Asphalt Sealers LLC for the 2015 Bittimus Seal Coat Project and recommend awarding contract for Farner Asphalt Sealers LLC in the amount of $293,822.80.
You've heard the motion from Mr. Touche. There is a second. Are there questions or comments? Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no, and that motion carries. Mr. Touche, please.
Under Item 9B2, I would like to make a motion to approve professional service agreement for the County Highway M/County Highway PD Utilities Extension.
We have a motion by Mr. Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Ricky. Mr. Touche?
This agreement with AECom is for a design engineering service of the sanitary sewer and water mains extension for the County Highway M/County Highway PD Project. The services will be compensated on the time and materials basis with a not-to-exceed amount of $62,050.
You've heard the explanation. There is a motion and a second. Are there questions? The questions for the committee or for Mr. Reader? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion for the approval of the professional services agreement signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no, and that motion carries. Mr. Touche, is there anything else from Public Works Sewer and Water?
That is all.
Thank you very much. We will move then to Public Safety and Welfare Committee. Mr. Yours, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Public Safety and Welfare Committee took no action today based off of advice from city staff.
Okay, so there is no action on Item 9C1. We are under new business. Do we have approval of operator licenses this evening? Ms. Schofield?
Yes, we have a handful of them from Paige Darnick at Mr. Bruce Tap House, Mitchell Shoot Jessica Marking, Dustin May, all at the Wisconsin Brewing Company, Holly Harvey and Melinda Genswald at Pasquales, Mark Largent at Vincenzo BP, and Jennifer Wilson at Quick Trip, number 837.
Do we have any motions at this time? Mr. Yours?
Move approval.
We have a motion by Mr. Yours to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Touche. Any questions on the applications? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval of the operator licenses signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, and that motion carries. We are on to announcements. Mr. Steiner?
Thank you, Mayor. VACT production of Shrek will continue this week. If you did not get an opportunity last weekend, a very good show, full of laughter and great entertainment. It'll be, tickets are on sale at online, VACT.org, or if you wish to call them, 845-VACT. That's Thursday, Friday, and Saturday of this week. Announcement coming out of our Parks Department, Mr. Walker wants to inform the citizens that Ironman bicyclists are now training throughout our city, using our parks and trails and our streets, primarily on Saturdays and Sundays, but there are a few groups that are training with leadership during the week also, especially down on Bruce Street, down around the swimming pool, at our little pond down there. So, be aware of that. This Ironman is a wonderful thing for our city, and I think just being aware that they're using our city and remembering that many of them are staying in our city and using our restaurants and fast foods and other things for what they need to do. Coming out of our recreation, Mr. Dudley says that his programs for the summer are in full swing. Most of our parks are being used by people, getting educated by our high school students who have an interest in leading young people in how to use parks and trails and to entertain themselves, and please, be aware that they're riding their bikes to and from these activities and these parks, not always on a trail, a lot of times on the street. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steiner. Any other announcements this evening? Mr. McIlvery?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to echo Mr. Steiner's sentiments. I've had the opportunity to sit through three, maybe it was four, full rehearsals of the show. I'm planning on going Friday, but one of the things that impresses me the most is the quality of talent that is available to the VACT, I guess you would say. Not only is the acting great and the singing wonderful, but one of the things that strikes me as singularly impressive is that the music is live, and it goes off without a hitch. And every time I sit there, I just scratch my head and think, wow, this is pretty cool. We're in a city of 11,000 people, and we have this kind of quality of presentation that we get to see. So, I would encourage everybody, if you get the chance, get there. You'll enjoy it. Kids will enjoy it. Parents will enjoy it. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. I hope to be there this weekend. Mr. Steiner?
Thanks for reminding me, Mac. I forgot one of my announcements. VACT is still fundraising. If you wish to participate in that, any amount of donation is gladly accepted, and that information can be found on the website and by a phone call also, with what I recited earlier. But they would like to get to their goal and beyond and start building here as soon as they can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steiner. Mr. Burns, please.
Yeah, just to follow up on the comments from Alder Steiner at the beginning of the meeting, staff is going to be working on getting information out on the requirements in our ordinance for the parking of large vehicles, which would include recreational vehicles and boats. We're going to be getting that information on the website, on the electronic newsletter, and also looking at including something in the Verona Press. But just wanted to let people know that the requirements for parking in our ordinance, it does allow for the parking of one vehicle, which exceeds 25 feet in length in a driveway in a residential zoning district during the appropriate season, and as long as there is use within a 30-day consecutive period. So, in other ways, the way to state the restriction, which is in our ordinance, is non-use for a period of 30 consecutive days. So, our ordinances do not prohibit the parking of large vehicles in driveways, but there is a requirement that they can't be stored during the off-season or for a period greater than 30 days when they're not being used. But we'll get the information put together and get that out through various mechanisms so that people can see the regulations.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Any additional comments this evening? Not seeing any. I would accept the motion for adjournment. We have a motion by Ms. Ricky. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by, was that Mr. Diaz?
Yours.
By Mr. Yours. Seconded by Mr. Yours to adjourn. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Motion carried. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.